Sure.
Yeah, my son said.
How are we?
I feel, how are we?
They have a little bit of everything and they give.
They have a little bit of everything and they give.
I think it'd be a big deal because I have seven of those. I think it'd be a big deal because I have seven of those. Part of the motion, thirty-two sets of. Part of the motion, thirty-two sets of. That's the cells. That's the cells. Put it on three. Put it on three. Signage off the windows, just leave the bar signs. Signage off the windows, just leave the bar signs.
Still want to be a landlord. Still want to be a landlord.
We had a company out of Utah call. We had a company out of Utah call.
Our, our job is the land use ordinance. Our, our job is the land use ordinance. Good morning. Good morning. We call the May ninth, two thousand and eighteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to We call the May ninth, two thousand and eighteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. order. Please join us for the Pledge of Legion. Please join us for the Pledge of Legion.
I. I. Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with the meeting, unfortunately last, this last month, we had a loss in our Before we start with the meeting, unfortunately last, this last month, we had a loss in our family family of the commissioners. of the commissioners. Commissioner Paul Silberg passed away in an accident, got killed in an accident, and we are all sad Commissioner Paul Silberg passed away in an accident, got killed in an accident and we are all sad and also our prayers are with Judy and his family. and also our prayers are with Judy and his family. We would like to open it up to the commissioners to make a statement and a celebration of life. We would like to open it up to the commissioners to make a statement and a celebration of life. I don't think, you, you don't have an statement, you have, Mr. Hill. I don't think, you, you don't have an statement, you have, Mr. Hill?
Thank you. Thank you. I just remember him being so happy and passionate about things and the one thing I recall at I just remember him being so happy and passionate about things and the one thing I recall at our our holiday lunch was how passionate he was and knowledgeable he was of his Tesla car. holiday lunch was how passionate he was and knowledgeable he was of his Tesla car. Made me laugh. Made me laugh.
Thank you. Thank you. Keith? Keith?
You know, I've known Paul for twenty, twenty years plus and really got to know him the You know, I've known Paul for twenty, twenty years plus and really got to know him the last couple last couple of years on this board and, and you know, he was very passionate about his, of years on this board and, and you know, he was very passionate about his, his jobs and, and just, his jobs and, and just, he's going to be missed, you know, professionally, you know, he's going to be missed, you know, professionally, you know, as a architect, we've, we've built a lot as a architect, we've, we've built a lot of his jobs over the years and I'm going to of his jobs over the years and I'm going to miss the guy. miss the guy.
Commissioner Abbott? Commissioner Abbott?
You know, it's hard to add anything to what has already been said, but I like what's You know, it's hard to add anything to what has already been said, but I like what's been said. been said. Paul was, he was just a nice, friendly, very intelligent individual and people like him Paul was, he was just a nice, friendly, very intelligent individual and people like him are what are what makes this world so much better to be in and I always enjoyed every time I, makes this world so much better to be in and I always enjoyed every time I, he would park his he would park his car over here and plug it in and I'd pick him up and drive over here car over here and plug it in and I'd pick him up and drive over here and he did like that Tesla and he did like that Tesla and this, this picture here in front of me just, just describes and this, this picture here in front of me just, just describes Paul. Paul. So he'll be missed. So he'll be missed.
Commissioner Gordon? Commissioner Gordon?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely. This is hard, it's, Paul's another one. This is hard, it's, Paul's another one. I'm getting tired of hauling flowers back to Lake Havasu City myself from this board, I'm getting tired of hauling flowers back to Lake Havasu City myself from this board, but I'm but I'm happy to do the job, but I've known Paul like I did Carl for the last fifteen, happy to do the job, but I've known Paul like I did Carl for the last fifteen, sixteen years sixteen years that I've lived in Lake Havasu and it, you know, professionally and personally that I've lived in Lake Havasu and it, you know, professionally and personally have known him have known him and he's always done an incredible job. and he's always done an incredible job. He's been a pillar in the community in Lake Havasu. He's been a pillar in the community in Lake Havasu. His work, his architectural work that we're in today and that is represented all over His work, his architectural work that we're in today and that is represented all over the county the county will stand the test of time and speaks volumes about his professionalism and will stand the test of time and speaks volumes about his professionalism and what he did for what he did for this community and this area. this community and this area. He was always one to kind of push the envelope a little bit architecturally, which I always He was always one to kind of push the envelope a little bit architecturally, which I always appreciated and professionally he pushed me a little bit to push the envelope and do appreciated and professionally he pushed me a little bit to push the envelope and do great great things in what I do, so for all of that, I'll always be very grateful and thankful things in what I do. So for all of that, I'll always be very grateful and thankful and, and remember Paul and he will and, and remember Paul and he will be deeply missed in the Lake Havasu City community as be deeply missed in the Lake Havasu City community as well as on this board. well as on this board.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul was a good friend of mine and for many years we both served and I was honored to Paul was a good friend of mine and for many years we both served and I was honored to be be part of his team on land use ordinance, technical advisory board and code advisory part of his team on land use ordinance, technical advisory board and code advisory board. board. I don't know how many rounds of these reviews and process that we spent, hundreds of hours I don't know how many rounds of these reviews and process that we have spent, hundreds of hours of many years, you know, together on this and his knowledge, his vision and also of many years, you know, together on this and his knowledge, his vision and also the way that the way that he would go about issues was amazing and again, one thing I'm going to he would go about issues was amazing and again, one thing I'm going to miss the greatest about miss the greatest about him is his excellent sense of humor, his smile, his laugh and all him is his excellent sense of humor, his smile, his laugh and all that. that. I know that, you know, he raised a lot of students. I know that, you know, he raised a lot of students. As a good architect, he had a lot of staff members that later on they decided to work As a good architect, he had a lot of staff members that later on they decided to work for the cities and I know that, you know, the cities are benefiting from a teacher for the cities and I know that, you know, the cities are benefiting from a teacher like Paul like Paul and, you know, amazing, amazing person. and, you know, amazing, amazing person. His masterpieces, they're off, the buildings that he has designed, couple of them in the His masterpieces, they're off, the buildings that he has designed, couple of them in the Mojave County in the Kingman area, I mean, people see it, very, very knowledgeable and Mojave County in the Kingman area, I mean, people see it, very, very knowledgeable and he was always updating himself. he was always updating himself. He was one of those architects that I think we were very lucky for him to stay in Mojave He was one of those architects that I think we were very lucky for him to stay in Mojave County and help us. County and help us, so definitely we're going to miss him. So definitely we're going to miss him. I talked to Judy, his wife, I invited her and she had a prior engagement, so appreciated I talked to Judy, his wife, I invited her and she had a prior engagement, so appreciated all the commission and also people who are attending today for this ceremony of life all the commission and also people who are attending today for this ceremony of life and his, his family is going to be in our prayers and, you know, we wish Judy, you know, and his, his family is going to be in our prayers and, you know, we wish Judy, you know, patience and basically prayers for, for her. patience and basically prayers for, for her. Commissioner Brule, you have anything to say about Paul? Commissioner Brule, you have anything to say about Paul?
I've missed the comments, haven't I? I've missed the comments, haven't I?
Go ahead, no, you're okay. Go ahead, no, you're okay. Any, any comment about celebration of life about Paul Silberg? Any, any comment about celebration of life about Paul Silberg?
Yeah, I, I was thinking about him as I, as I came in because I'm running a little Yeah, I, I was thinking about him as I, as I came in because I'm running a little late late today and he would be the first one to be helping me with my computer and getting today and he would be the first one to be helping me with my computer and getting it it all plugged in and climbing underneath the desk. all plugged in and climbing underneath the desk. He was a nice guy. He was a nice guy. He was always gracious and kind and I know he did a lot of things in the community and, He was always gracious and kind and I know he did a lot of things in the community and, and we're all thankful for that, but just as a human being, he was just a good guy and we're all thankful for that, but just as a human being, he was just a good guy and I appreciated him. and I appreciated him. He was always encouraging, especially when I was new here and he just never failed to He was always encouraging, especially when I was new here and he just never failed to be gracious and kind and gentlemanly and professional, so I don't, I don't know many be gracious and kind and gentlemanly and professional, so I don't, I don't know many people that are like that, although there are a few of them here, so I appreciate that. people that are like that, although there are a few of them here, so I appreciate that. I'm going to miss Paul very much. I'm going to miss Paul very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Drayka Walsh? Drayka Walsh?
Chairman of the Army, I appreciate the opportunity. Chairman of the Army, I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a pleasure, I've known Paul for some time and, and it's been a pleasure working It's been a pleasure, I've known Paul for some time and, and it's been a pleasure working with him. with him. You know, you look at the, the impact that he's had on Mojave County, serving on, on You know, you look at the, the impact that he's had on Mojave County, serving on, on this commission, on the building code advisory board. this commission, on the building code advisory board. Two of our, our buildings over Public Works and Development Services were, were designed Two of our, our buildings over Public Works and Development Services were, were designed by him and just, just working with, with him, just a great man and a real, as was said by him and just, just working with, with him, just a great man and a real, as was said by, by, by many, just a real gentleman and, and real professional and, and just a great guy. by many, just a real gentleman and, and real professional and, and just a great guy. He definitely will be missed and it's, it's neat to see the impact that he's had on Mojave He definitely will be missed and it's, it's neat to see the impact that he's had on Mojave County, both, both here, but then, you know, aesthetically throughout the county, the, the County, both, both here, but then, you know, aesthetically throughout the county, the, the number of buildings that he's done and, and all the, the lasting legacy that, that number of buildings that he's done and, and all the, the lasting legacy that, that is out is out there, that, that he has, he has contributed to Mojave County. there, that, that he has, he has contributed to Mojave County. It's, it's a real tribute to him, so it's, it's been a pleasure knowing him and being It's, it's a real tribute to him, so it's, it's been a pleasure knowing him and being able to work with him. able to work with him.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Beller? Ms. Beller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've probably known Paul close to twenty years, maybe a little more and I have been I've probably known Paul close to twenty years, maybe a little more and I have been his customer, he's been mine and he's also served on several of the boards that we work his customer, he's been mine and he's also served on several of the boards that we work with. with. He, it seems like he was always giving of his time, very generously, almost without He, it seems like he was always giving of his time, very generously, almost without limit. limit. He was both fun and unsettling at the same time because as Commissioner Gordon noted, He was both fun and unsettling at the same time because as Commissioner Gordon noted, he was always pushing the envelope, he was always coming back at us with something new, he was always pushing the envelope, he was always coming back at us with something new, something different. something different. I, I really considered him one of the, one of the county's great innovators and as everyone I, I really consider him one of the, one of the county's great innovators and as everyone has said, he will be sorely missed. has said, he will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that likes to speak for Paul Silberg? Do we have anybody else that likes to speak for Paul Silberg? If not, we're going to take a short break. If not, we're going to take a short break. It says ten minutes, but I think it would be less than that, about five minutes. It says ten minutes, but I think it would be less than that, about five minutes. Can I go back? Can I go back?
Okay, we call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Bruhl.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Beller.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Chairman Asami.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
We have an announcement that I would like for you to pay attention to.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table, next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, June 4th, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location here, with the exception of any continued items. Before we go to the motion to approve the meetings, we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Neal. We would like to welcome you to the Commission and would like for you to, you know, explain about your background and, you know, if you have anything to say.
Thank you, my name's Brad Neal from Lake Havasu. I've been in Arizona since 1976. I've been self-employed for well over forty years. I am still an active, uh, real estate appraiser. I work in Bullhead, Havasu, and at times in Kingman, Golden, uh, Fort Mojave and the Valley, and also the Topoc. Best thing I can say is, uh, I, like I said, where I have been here forever, I have seen, I have seen, uh, that Havasu grow, I've seen the county grow. All the cities and the county is going through a big change with much younger people, and, uh, that's about it.
Well, thank you, and definitely your knowledge about real estate, you know, concurs with land use ordinance, that's what we have. So, we appreciate you and thank you for joining us. Thank you. We need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 14th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Beller. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We also need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 11th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Beller. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation.
Excuse me, Scott, there was a, uh, I apologize. We have a lot of people from, for item number four, and also we have invited our county attorney here, so we want to make sure that, you know, we, if you don't mind, as long as there is no objection, I guess, I, you know, my suggestion is that, you know, we bring item number four to the front, so if we can...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we change the order of the day and move number four to be heard first.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bruhl made the motion, and Commissioner Walker made the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, please.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 317-57021 to allow for a heliport with two helipads and a C2H highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. This application was heard and continued by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the March 15th, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We've received an additional three letters in opposition and one letter in favor of the application. The applicant, Kathy Taka-Hitts, has also provided more information on the development in the area, and they held, the applicant held a meeting on April 23rd to discuss, um, the item, but no members of the public attended that meeting. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I mean, Scott, would you like to address now or at the end, after, okay? Mr. David Dyer. Uh, here it says that you are speaking on behalf of entire group, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, David Dyer, 20454 North Sesna Drive, White Hills, Arizona, H6445. Our condolences to your colleague. We understand that we're at that age where it's undescribable.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you giving us the time to get one speaker for all the things that we want to bring to instead of twenty separate speakers. Okay, let me start off with this. I'm not sure, is that the way to do that, to get that up on the screen?
Are you looking at the aerial map? The GIS map you like to do? Oh, you already have it, okay. Go ahead.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay. If you got good eyes, you can read that.
Uh, they can zoom in.
Eyes are not good.
I think the circle area is the one that you want us to see, right?
That's correct.
Okay, could you zoom on that, please? Thank you.
Pardon?
No, I'm asking the control room to zoom on that item.
Oh, they can do that. Good for them. All right, you guys are all high-tech here. Good for you. Okay, basically what it says is this is a very misleading statement. It says, pardon me while I go sideways, "The landing area is operated for private use only." That's a very, very misleading statement. Now, here's what that statement means to the FAA and the public. Private means private. We, I think we all have a definition ourselves. But for the FAA, this says CFR, Code of Federal Regulations, and it's the part, it's the bible for the FAA, the Supreme Court decision, so to speak, for their group, on approving airspace requirements for new airports and helicopters. And they give a definition of terms that they fill out. What that private use means, private use means available for use by the owner or by the owner and other persons authorized by the owner. So, that means that if you approve this, they can bring in commercial operations, which they plan on doing, and they can bring in Part 135, which is charter on-call paid passengers to operate wherever they want. They can bring any size of helicopter in they want. If they want to and go to the expense, they can actually go to a 141 operation, scheduled air carrier operation. I'm not expecting this to happen. They have to put up extensive fixing, fencing, security, TSA, the whole route. But they can bring in a fifty-passenger helicopter if they want and operate all day long. So, private use is very misleading. Here's another document. This is a letter at Sundance Helicopters, and if you could zoom in to that three paragraphs that I have there with the asterisk marked on the end. I love this control, it's nice. Anyway, what it says on those threes, and probably going to have to read this to you. It says, "Our current operations from the White Hills helipad consist of a variety of aerial sightseeing tour flights. They go to our landing zones in the Grand Canyon. Route procedures are in place and communication protocol is an important part of that structure. And enumerated on the Las Vegas, LAS, means Las Vegas sectional chart, Sundance uses 120.65 when operating in the vicinity of White Hills. Our pilots communicate upon departure, en route, and upon return. While operating in the vicinity of Triangle Air Park, a privately-owned airport listed on the sectional chart, Sundance attempts communications with aircraft observed using the airport in addition to making position reports as they are coming and going from the facility. The number of aircraft observed has been minimal, and no conflicts have been reported to date. The airport does not have a frequency published on the chart or the AFD Airport Facility Directory, for those of you not aviation, and resides in uncontrolled G airspace, BRG airspace. Sundance makes radio calls as required using the Lake Mead frequency published on the chart, but does not receive a response. And attempts to address aircraft by tail number are hampered by missing end numbers." Okay, that's all I want to read of that one. First of all, we don't have any missing end numbers. I'm also aircraft mechanic and inspector. All the end numbers on the aircraft at Triangle Air Park are legal. Now, here's what I want to show you. If you can zoom in on this red print right here. Perfect. Here's where 12065 comes in. And on this side up here, on this side right here is Las Vegas. On the other side, to your right of the screen up there, is the Grand Canyon. The note says, "Extensive concentration of tour operations daily between the Grand Canyon National Park and the Las Vegas Class B airspace. All VFR traffic operating between these boundaries are encouraged to monitor/communicate on 12065." Gentlemen, that's the only place 12065 is used. It's not authorized for airport operations. And no wonder we don't hear them. They're using a frequency that flies from Las Vegas to the canyon. They talk on that frequency and they make position reports. When we fly north and south up the valley, we tune it in. We don't know what they're saying, we know they're altituded, but they have fixes on their charts that's not available to the public about where they are. But we still communicate, we still report our position on that frequency. In between Las Vegas and the Grand Canyon, that's it. That's the only time the FCC authorizes the use of that frequency. Now, you want the frequency that Triangle has? This is from the Airman's Information Manual, and it's for the Common Traffic Advisory Frequency. Let me get that up there for a minute, right there at the top. CTAF, Common Traffic Advisory Frequency. When you want to go into an airport, they have a frequency that you use for giving position reports so you can avoid and know where their other aircraft are. Triangle has one of these. It's 122.9. We've been using that frequency since 1984. And here's from the AIM, Airman's Information Manual. If you have no tower, we have no tower. If you have no flight service station, we don't have one. If you have no Unicom, we don't have one. At the bottom of this sheet tells what Unicom is. Basically, it's a frequency that you can ask for, you can handle ground stuff, you can ask for fueling, maintenance. Call my wife, I'm at the airport. We don't do that, we just have a Common Traffic Advisory Frequency. Now, all over the United States, when you go up to an airport and you want to land at that airport and it has no tower, no flight service station, and no Unicom, that is the frequency, it's called a multi-com frequency. It says here, "Self-announce," if you don't have any of those things, "self-announce on multi-com frequency 122.9." They're calling on 2065. All right, now, here's another one that I want to show. It says, "Radios are not required on, at Triangle Air Park, nor are they required at Kingman Airport. You can fly in there without a radio. If you have a radio, then you should use it. You, and my students, will use it and make self-announcements so everybody else knows where they're at. Half of our airplanes at Triangle Air Park do not have radios. So you can get the best communication system you want, and I'm entirely for communicating with other airplanes in a traffic pattern. And I have talked to these pilots at Triangle, and the ones that have radios do it every single time. They make me proud. But, they still have half our airplanes that do not have communication."
Mr. Dyer, I have two comments. First of all, one for the public. We are providing extra time for Mr. Dyer because he's speaking on behalf of the whole group, so that's extended time. Number two, this commission is basically looking at an application from the land use ordinance and compares it to the land use ordinance that is in place. So if I may ask you to focus your, you know, conversation on the land use ordinance, I appreciate that because none of us, I believe, are qualified about the FAA or flying, but we are basically, you know, looking at the land use ordinance. So if you would focus on the land use and, you know, issue on that, I greatly would appreciate that.
Okay, some of mine does. I've prepared this, and I beg your indulgence to let me continue with it.
Please, absolutely.
And I understand, I understand the point you're making. And a lot of my stuff does do that.
Okay.
But I can't pick it apart at this particular moment.
All right.
All right. Okay, this is Code of Federal Regulations, Part 91, General Aviation Rule. And it has general operating and flight rules. And it says, let me get my glasses on, senior moment, "Operating on or in the vicinity of an airport in Class G airspace." We're in Class G airspace. And it's the same also for Class E, that is Kingman Airport. And it's, "Unless otherwise authorized or required, each person operating an aircraft on or in the vicinity of an airport in a Class G airspace must comply with the requirements of this section." Talks about the direction of turns. "When approaching to land at an airport without an operating control tower in Class G airspace, each pilot of an airplane must make all turns of that airplane to the left, unless you file all kinds of paperwork that says you're not going to do it." Number two, down here at the bottom, if you can focus on that, right here, thank you. "Each pilot of a helicopter or a powered parachute must avoid the flow of fixed-wing aircraft." Okay, what's the point of that? Is that they have to stay away from our traffic pattern and the flow of airplanes. That's the law. Now, this one is really kind of an ugly form. We've applied to the FAA under the Freedom of Information Act for all the documents that they've used to bring to you that say that they approve this airspace requirement. We've gotten back some from Los Angeles. This is one of the ones that we got back from Los Angeles. And it has to do with the 2012 approval, airspace approval for the last-stop helicopter pad that's there already. We're getting the ones that were set out last year, but we haven't received them yet. Now, in this form, it's, you're not going to be able to blow this one up, but you see this over here to the right, this little mark I have? I want to read to you what it says. And it says this. Heliport, this is what they put down that they're going to do if they get that heliport in 2012. It asks for their magnetic direction of ingress and egress routes in and out of there, based upon our airport there. And they put down 180 degrees in, 180 degrees out, turning to 270. That's south going west. They even put a picture of it in there. And let's see if I can get that on the screen. There we go. All right, you can see north up there. This is their photograph, this is their picture, this is their ingress and egress that they have, they submitted to the FAA and the FAA approved it. And in fact, when you approved their operation at airport, you were basically, they were committed for them to operate this under your permission too, because you required them to follow the FAA guidelines, the requirements. And they have not done that since that heliport opened. They have never seen an aircraft go to the west yet. I've seen them all over our airport, and we've been dodging them ever since. But this is a written, I was surprised when we got this information. They gave us a verbal confirmation in 2012, you would never interfere with our traffic pattern, right? And I told you last meeting that the verbal promise is worth nothing. You know what? A written promise has no value either. The credibility is way down for their operation. Okay, here's another one. This is a checklist. This is not random. When you ask for airspace approval, the FAA gets a checklist, they go through it.
Mr. Dyer, please conclude the conversation about, you know, the FAA and all that, and please focus on the land use ordinance. Because I said, that is the focus of this commission. FAA material is not within our qualification. So what I'm saying is that, you know, if you could conclude your conversation about, you know, the air patterns and all that, but yet please focus on the land use. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, would obstructions on the land use be pertaining to this investigation, to this?
Well, you know, let me explain, let me explain to you. Yeah, let me explain to you what our process is. There is an application before us on a piece of parcel of land. We have to look into that application, and we do have an ordinance, right, wrong, or whatever it is, that is our guideline. As long as this application matches with the ordinance, the land use ordinance that is passed by the Board of Supervisors... is passed by the Board of Supervisors, that means that, you know, we have to make a decision. And just, again, we are not decision-makers. We are basically making recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as such that this application meets the, meets and boundaries of, you know, Land Use Ordinance or not. That's about it. Just like, you know, when you're looking at your project, I assume at one time, exact same thing happened. Someone came up, put the application out about your airport, and, you know, the commission at the time and the Board of Supervisors decided it is consistent with the Land Use Ordinance, and they gave approval. You have an, you have an airport, you have a airpark, and again, that is the case. Similar situation is here. So my, my point to you is if you would focus on the Land Use Ordinance, and I understand that you're objecting to the project, please give us the reasons why, from the Land Use Ordinance, this project should not be recommended for approval.
Well, yeah, that kind of puts, I have to think about that just for a second.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
Would it be any harm for me to go ahead and put in the record what I have here? I think I've got about another five minutes, and I know you can ignore it, but it would like.
Okay, so would you, would you like to have five minutes then?
I would.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. So what we have here is, this is the FAA approval sheet for the 2012. And if you see on the right-hand side here, it has three asterisks. I won't ask you to read that, but I have enlarged it. And this is what the FAA is requiring. This helport would be underneath the traffic pattern for arriving and departing aircraft using runway 0826 at Triangle Airport. AZ50, that's our code. Helicopters using this helipad need to remain well clear of the traffic pattern. A common frequency to be used by this helport in AZ50 is highly recommended. The second comment on that chart from the FAA, obstruction approximately 80 feet, 270 degrees to the west from the new pad location, applicant to move power lines and small signs, 80 and 415 feet respectively. Power line looks like it's still up. Okay, here's another one. And you know what? I'm going to leave a copy of this with your staff so it does get in the record here. I don't have 17 copies, so I'll just leave it with her. This is Part 157, FAA determinations. It says that when they determine that airspace, they're supposed to contact us, and we're supposed to be a party to it. So since I'm time-limited, I won't take you through that, but if you would like to Google it, you can. Here's another one. This is Boulder City Airport. The question came last time, is there an incompatibility between helicopters and airplanes? The answer is, yes, there is. This article on Boulder City basically says that in 2007, the FAA made a ramp study up there, and they recommended they put in a tower. In 2011, the city asked for a tower. The FAA didn't have the money. And this, two weeks ago, April 25th, and you can pull it up on Google, they approved Boulder City for a tower, $5 million. City comes up with $500,000. And they got moved up to list to number three, meaning they're the third most dangerous airport in the country. And the article states in there that the reason is the conflict between helicopters and fixed-wing traffic. Now, I'm running out of my five minutes, right?
Yeah, you're okay.
I'm okay, all right. Here's one more interesting photo that I want to bring to you. See, that's that one. You're going to love this one. The gun range, right? Just what you guys wanted to hear. You see at the end of this trench where they're shooting out there? If you look right here, there's a little spot. You know what that is? It's airplanes at Triangle Airport, departing and arriving through, above that trench. When the bullets escape out of that trench, they head for the airplanes. It's only the second time in my life I've had to do a post-flight for bullet holes. The first was Gulf War II. Have a solution? Have them take this range and put it from one side, shoot from the other side towards air buildings and their helicopters. So, now, and this is it, if I'm still under time?
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Oh, I got one.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, okay. You're a good man.
No.
I'll vote for you next time. What are you running for? Okay, there will be financial damage to Triangle Airport if the helipads are approved. We have two current members, one of who's in the audience now, who operate out of Boulder City, and they have left because of the danger involved up there. And those plans now are on hold and canceled if our helo, if the helipads are approved. Okay? And one for you. You, last time we had a meeting, you talked about people who live on golf courses should expect golf balls? You're absolutely right. But you know what? They expect golf balls from their own golf course, not from outside. And they don't expect bowling balls instead of golf balls. And so a helicopter footprint compared to our little airplane footprint is about the difference between a golf ball and a bowling ball.
Almost definitely. I agree.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Any question for the staff? I have a question for Scott, you know, thank you. Please have a seat. Thank you.
You're done with me, huh?
Yes, please. Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, we have a question. Hello. At our meeting two months ago, we asked that members of your group meet with the applicant to try to work out some kind of alternate solutions or things that would be workable and safe. And yet, I understand, no meeting ever took place. Do you know why this turned out, or do you know why you did not meet with the applicant?
Yes, absolutely. This is why we call the elephant in the room. It's not such a big elephant after all. We had verbal promises from this same group, same owner, in 2012 that he would never enter our traffic pattern, interfere with it. He put it in writing to the FAA, to the county, you approved it, he never followed it. And my comment then is the same as now. It's not trustworthy. Written promise, verbal promise is not worth. So we need a way to enforce what goes on. And until we have a way of doing an enforcement, it's a waste of time. We can make any agreement we want, and they can violate it the next day. We're going through this right now with Iran and North Korea. I mean, you know, we're a microcosm of that. What do we do when they don't do what they say they're going to do?
Well, my, my question was, and I think you've answered it. I do. Thank you very much, but I was disappointed that that meeting didn't take place as agreed upon.
Yeah, well, part of it was that we didn't have the information yet. We still don't have all the information. The data that they supplied for their approval of this has not arrived yet. So we were waiting for that, and we still don't have it. But we did get, after that meeting was scheduled, we did get this information from the FAA. So it was too premature, the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other question?
Yeah, I have a question. The current traffic at your airport, how many takes, takeoff and that landings a day for fixed wing?
For fixed wing?
Yes.
Yes. We're, we're estimating about 12 takeoff and landings a day, average.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's a, it's a private airport for enjoyment. Low volume. They're estimating 200 a day, operation of the helicopters, so. Interesting.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Scott, could you, I know that, you know, you looked at the application, you looked at the ordinance, and your, basically, staff recommendation is for approval. Could you in detail provide the logic behind that decision?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Right now, in our zoning ordinance, it allows for an, an airport or helipad to be located in any zone under a special use permit. So that meets the, the requirements for the application. We've also included in our recommendation conditions of approval that they need to meet our development standards with a site plan. So once they get approved, if they get approved, then they would have to come in and get a site plan, and all of our requirements would have to be fulfilled at that time with, in regards to parking, setbacks, anything else pertaining to the zoning ordinance. So as far as we can see, it meets our conditions, and that a lot of the concerns that they might have, that the Triangle Airport might have, deals with the FAA and their regulations.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett, do you have anything to add to it? Mr. Ryan? Could we ask you to come to the podium? Just want to, basically, if you could elaborate from the legal point of view, the commission's duty, and also, you know, what, what you can add on to this case in terms of Land Use Ordinance recommendation application?
Good, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I think much of what's been said is, is I would be, I'd say is consistent with what the law is, that we're here not to enforce FAA rules. This is not an FAA organization or anything that, in that regard. This is to determine whether the applicant is following along with the Land Use Ordinance. The, the staff has recommended that it is consistent with that, and that's what the board will hear, and then the board will decide whether that's something you wish to recommend to go to the supervisors or not. It's pretty straightforward, and I, I don't disagree with the statements that you have made or that the staff has made already.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a real bad habit in my business experiences over the years. Get rid of all the rules and regulations and look at common sense. I understand where these people are coming from. One word, safety. Stop and think about that. You can handle your rules and regulations, but it boils down to, if you lived out there and, and there was a crash because somebody didn't follow the rules, and somebody got badly maimed or killed, what's the one word that keeps popping up? It's just, common sense.
Okay. Could you elaborate on the legality of the ordinance then? Because obviously, you know, you have problem with having like a regulation in place, ordinance in place.
Especially since, right now, they've only got, what'd he say, 12 or the 20 that you take off in, that landings a day, and the choppers have a long-term projection of over 200. That thing's never going to be still. And it is a private airport.
I cannot disagree with your, with your logic. Common sense suggests that there may be some safety issues, but that's not going to be an, an issue that this commission would address. Safety issues are likely to be something that the FAA would want to know about. I'm sure that they would. And I'm sure that there's a, a mechanism or a procedure, and I'm sure this gentleman could probably explain it, whereby if there's concerns with aviation and someone is not following the rules of the FAA, that then they would then go before the FAA or file complaints to the FAA or the appropriate agency who would then investigate it and determine whether a license should be suspended, revoked, terminated, whatnot. But I think that's really issues that are going to be within the FAA.
And any item that, you know, we disagree with in terms of regulation, we are not in a position to make that decision. We are just making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and supervisors, they can deregulate if they want, they can change if they want, because they're the elected officials on behalf of the Mojave County residents. So what I'm saying is that, you know, what we have, if we like it or if we don't like it, we have to obey the current ordinance that we have.
I understand that.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, we are clear on that. You know, there's, there are a lot of items that comes before us that, you know, we think that, you know, well, personally, we disagree with it. But again, because of the guidelines that we have and the legality of it, that we have to respect the ordinance, you know, that's up to the Board of Supervisors if they want to deviate from it.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks, and I'm representing all the empty seats on that side. There are several items that we went over, and I'll address some that the gentleman talked about. This project is much bigger than just the helport. Some of the statements are erroneous. There's not a projection of 200 helicopter flights per day. There's a projection on the application of 300 to 600 per month, which is 10 to 20 a day. The helports are, on some of the, the presentations that they made showed 20 landing pads, and there are in fact only 10. They do have FAA approval for this. FAA member did come out and inspect the site. They're aware of Triangle. I'm not aware if they're required to contact Triangle, but they did issue approvals on this. The issue of the private helicopter is also called, let's see, prior permission required, I think is what it's called. I think the Triangle has the same issue. In this particular case, the owner of this project has a exclusive landing agreement and exclusive contract with Sundance to provide the service at this site, so there will not be a multitude of different people there. In terms of the land use, which is the focus of this particular request, we do meet the general plan requirements. It is consistent. I was very disappointed that no members wanted to discuss anything, because I did make effort to get the Director of Operations and Safety for Sundance to the meeting to speak with some of these issues. When I listened to that presentation, the issue of the frequency seems a no-brainer. They get together, they say what the frequency is, and that's the end of the story. If they're not using the same one, you know, shame on them for not bringing it up before, quite frankly. Those types of simple things. We do have some flight patterns. They're in the packet. I don't know if the gentlemen have seen it. These are what they, I don't know if that's, where does it go? Like that? Is that correct?
Yes.
But I can't see with my, without my glasses. What the heck?
You need to turn it 90 degree.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Anyways, the Triangle Airport here is right here. Their main flight path or their runway is right here. So they're going in and out here. They have an auxiliary runway here that is, my understanding, based on the last time I worked with them, isn't, it's rarely used, but it is available whenever they have to have it. So the flight path goes in and out on the other side of the highway. And when I spoke with Mark, there is an intersect with this flight line and them a little over two miles out. If that's not sufficient for the fixed-wing operations, we need to go back and speak with the helicopter operator and make it right. To me, it seems very simple. I was prepared to discuss and exchange specific contact information for Sundance, for the owner, and I, and I hope to get him returned specific contact information for the Triangle Airport. Communication is key, and it has not occurred, it's very unfortunate, but we were prepared to move far ahead and give them some sort of idea on, you know, projected flights. Those are timed flights, and we can provide them schedules. Right now, they fly two to three flights a day with two aircraft. So they keep normally three of the helicopters on site, one in, in case something goes wrong with one of the units. It's not a free-for-all that they can get a 50 pilot, you know, passenger airplane. In fact, the application, I think, shows an A star. I'll have to look at that to make sure, but I think those are six or eight passenger helicopters. I don't want to make it any more than what it is. As far as I'm concerned, the FAA is responsible. If there are serious safety issues, I've encouraged them also to go the FAA. I reviewed those records. There are no complaints issued as, as of this time. I was also concerned when I was aware they made a request to the FAA, and I did track down an FAA person to look at the letter that they submitted requesting information. It is only on the 2012 application. And again, if there are problems with that, you know, I looked for that because I didn't want to be on my heels getting here and finding something that I didn't like. I found nothing. Okay, they were just a broad brush. Give me everything you have on this. I don't begrudge the, their diligence in trying to get information. I do begrudge the wasted 60 days when we had an agreement. We were asked to do it. I bent over backwards to try to get it done and was continually told, we're not prepared to meet. And that's not, it was deceitful, and it was fool-hearted, because we wasted an easy opportunity. And that's not, it was deceitful, and it was fool-hearted, because we wasted an easy opportunity to get through some of these items. Let me jump one more, because the item, we got so tied up in all the other stuff. I will tell you that this is part of a bigger project that we've been working on for several months. It's called the Grand Canyon Adventure Travel Center. And I have been working with Bennett Bratley, the county's Economic Development Director, on some revenue projections and beneficial impacts to the county as a result of the project. It sits on 42 acres of land all around. This shows the helicopter. So the first helipad is right here with two landing pads, and the back one has eight landing pads for the total of 10. The orange down the middle is sort of like their little runway, because the helicopter will kind of hover at one end and then go down the middle and up and out. This area here is the Grand Canyon Travel Center, currently processing the commercial site plan for that. The projections, I won't bore you with the details, although I did provide you copies, are very beneficial. They show, in fact, these are five-year projections, and the first five years that the direct and indirect benefits of the heliport is over $23 million. This is part of a cohesive plan. The heliport area is designed to bring people into the county to capture some of that tax revenue that currently we don't get when they fly directly from Vegas to the Grand Canyon and do not stop in the county.
Ms. Tackett, I'm going to ask you the same thing I asked the gentleman. Could you make your case about the land use ordinance and how that would be applicable to this project?
This complies with the land use ordinance, the general plan, the zoning. I followed every process. I've done what the committee and commission has requested, and I do anticipate you voting on this today, and I would hope you'd agree to approve this item. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any question from the commission? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up the discussion with the commission.
Mr. Chairman, these sort of items are always hard for the commission because of some of the comments previously. We're asked to look at the ordinance, and when there's safety involved and there's, what's the word I'm looking for, when there's code compliance and other things involved, those things are outside of our control. So it makes it hard when we have an existing use that's there. Yes, they're expanding the use. You know, we're presented with the information that appears that, you know, the FAA and the appropriate agencies are involved and have accepted and approved the use. It's hard for us to not follow those recommendations. So I just wanted to say that. I don't have anything else to say other than, you know, like you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, at the end of the day, when it goes beyond what our job is, it comes down to the elected officials of the Board of Supervisors to weigh in the impacts to the community that the project may or may not have. They can act on it better than we can. Thank you.
Come here, Brew.
I agree with the Commissioner's comments, and I would like to add to that. I had concerns because we had so many community members with so much experience bringing up the safety issue, which makes all of us concerned, and it is part of the approval that, that safety, you know, is a priority and that special permit can be revoked if there was a safety issue. But I do agree, we're not the body to determine what the safety factors are as far as FAA compliance. We do have their approval, but I understand the community, they're looking at how this change in use will affect their enjoyment and their use of their property. So I'm looking at it in terms of that. But there are rights of the developer to use his property as its own. So in looking at all that, the main problem I see is something that I can't really address, but what I would say as an aviator, as a pilot, is that the pilot community has to stick together, whether they're helicopters or private pilots. The way this system works is the FAA, just like the federal government, can't govern our lives and how we make choices every single day. We have to work together. That's why I was disappointed they didn't work together, because that's what needs to happen. They need to be on the same frequency with each other, literally and figuratively. They need to work together. Class G airspace is something that means a lot of responsibility for the pilots in charge, and they need to act that way and communicate with each other. But that's a personal opinion, probably not part of this. But that is one way to resolve that problem, in my opinion. I don't think this board can resolve that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abbott?
Mr. Chairman, the information I have, it is very clear that Planning and Zoning has recommended approval on this based on what the applicant is asking for. That's very clear in my mind. I have this little feeling that I'm not going to vote to send this to the commissioners, to the supervisors, that I'm voting yes or no, period.
Any other comments on the commission? Okay, well, if not, I entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve, per staff recommendations, to send this on.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Gordon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Abstentions?
What's that? Yeah, we have abstention, but she made a note.
I thought I made that clear.
Right, she made it clear. Thank you. Okay, we go back to item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor Parcel Number 402-77-015B to allow for a recreational vehicle park in an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the scenic vicinity Arizona Strip area. The proposed recreational vehicle park will be Phase II of the proposed Orchard RV Park that is located directly south of the subject parcel. We've received four letters in opposition and one email stating that they had a meeting, a community meeting held, and a petition gathered. We did not receive the petition, just the email. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Before we go on this item, Mr. Ryan, I know that you're a busy man. We promise to behave from this point on. Do we have the applicant here?
I'm the applicant.
Would you like to address the commission?
Please vote for it. Thank you. No one want to hear it.
Okay. Does the commission have any question for the applicant? If not, any discussion? If not, entertain a motion?
I have one question for the applicant. If...
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Michael T. Black, 83, 21, Black Brothers Court, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, my question is, I'm trying to get to the map here. You're going to be using the six acres on the other side of Las Vegas. Is that correct, Las Vegas?
I just want to say, yeah.
Yes. And you're only going to be addressing the six acres, not the whole parcel?
That's all that's on the plan that we have today. I don't know what happens in the future, but this is what we're doing current.
Yeah, because I heard there was a meeting last night. I heard it was good, and you were there, and there was good participation. The gentleman I talked to said his only concern was, is, you know, he trusts you, and he said that you said it's only the six acres, but, you know, I don't know if we can put that as a condition.
Well, I own 800 acres out there, and I can't tell them what the future is, and that's what I told them. I said, I'm...
That would be a future application.
This is what it is. Today, I don't know.
So basically, what we're looking at is just the improvements on the six acres?
Detective Walsh?
For Commissioners, or Chairman Azami, Commissioner Walker, for clarification, the application and what's before you is for the 30, it is 36, 35.37 acre parcel that the six acres is a part of. So this action itself would entail the full 36 acres.
Okay. And you own how many acres that surround this?
There's 600 and some, and, you know, on that road there that I helped pay for about 20% of, I think.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to work with the people there. I'm not going to create problems. Do what I say.
You don't have a helicopter, do you?
I do. No, I don't. I have a flying machine.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
I have a question for staff. When you look at the applicant's map, it does say 29 lots, six acres. So as...
Mr. Chairman?
...Walker was talking about, that...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, that's, they indicated as a site plan almost to what they were looking at doing in the future. When we process a special use permit, we process it for the parcel itself. If the commission or the applicant wanted to condition it to just the six acres, they might be able to do that. But as far as the processing of the special use permit, we apply it to the whole parcel. If they wanted to come down in the future and they built this RV park, but they wanted to add six more spaces on the end, the parcel still has, the entire parcel still has the special use permit, and they wouldn't have to come back and redo this application.
That's the 10-acre that says the special use permit is...
35-acre.
AR-10 acre?
No, it's for the 35.37 acres.
On this particular piece, there's a wash that runs through there that kind, we're not going to build RVs past that wash, because it's too deep and it wouldn't be very good to do that.
I'm sure that the...
But I really don't want to, I'm not going to do anything without going to the people and talking to them. I'm just not going to do that.
Well, bottom line is, Commissioner Abbott, the application is almost 36 acres, and only six acre is before us at this time.
Right.
Thank you. If we have no more question, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, staff recommendations.
Second motion?
We have a motion by, first motion by Commissioner Beller, and second by Commissioner Gordon. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Thank you.
Item 2A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the South Mojave Valley Area Plan for Assessor Parcel Number 224-25001 from an AR agricultural residential land use designation to a GC general commercial land use designation in the Mojave Valley vicinity. The applicant is proposing this amendment to allow for a truck parking lot. We have received one letter of opposition. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, we have the applicant here. Mr. Morse?
Good morning, Chairman Azami and Commissioners. My name is Larry Morse. I'm with ARQ Engineering. My address is 1685 Schiefer, Fort Mojave, Arizona.
Thank you.
I'm representing the applicant if there's any questions.
Is there a question from the applicant? Entertaining a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, item 2A, as per staff recommendations. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Beller. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item number 2B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 224-25001 from a C-2-1A general commercial 1-acre minimum lot size zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing and open lot storage zone, to allow for a truck parking lot in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, same item, just a specific, the CMO. Any questions from the applicant? And we have nobody sign up for this item. I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, based on, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve, based on staff recommendations. I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gordon, and second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 306-22239 from an AR-2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential 1-acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Do we have the applicant here? Okay. We don't have the applicant here. There's, nobody has signed up. Is that, yeah. Any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, first half recommendation.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, second by Commissioner Brew. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, which is item number five.
Item number five is a discussion and possible action on amendment to the Mojave County Ordinance Number 2010-10 to include new fees, fee increases for service provided through the implementation of the Mojave County zoning ordinance, and to include new fees and fee increases for services provided through the implementation of the Mojave County land division regulations formerly included in Mojave County Ordinance Number 2010-07. This is a, this item brings back to the commission the proposed new fees and increases in fees that are charged for processing and implementation of the zoning ordinance as well as the land division regulations or this subdivision ordinance. The commission asked that the department go to the Board of Supervisors, ask for some guidance as to what would be appropriate fees, or more importantly, the percentage or the ratio of cost recovery that we were looking for in processing versus revenue. The department has done that, and I'm going to turn the time over to Director Walsh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Azami, thank you. Members of the commission, as you'll recall, as Chris mentioned, in the February meeting, the commission initially heard this and voted to send this to the Board of Supervisors to obtain clear direction and a strategy on how to approach the fees. So this was presented to the Board of Supervisors on April 4th. Staff working, went through item by item on the fees, and we looked to try and come up with a strategy that would be palatable to the public, to the board, and something that we could all get behind. One thing that we looked at was the current cost that the Planning and Zoning Department bears on the general fund. And what we found, and what was mentioned previously, is that basically about 70% of planning and zoning costs in processing fees, in processing permit applications is covered by the general fund. The remaining 30% of those costs are covered by the fees themselves. We also went back and we looked at the current trends that we're seeing, the increase in applications that we're having, the increased workload that that brings with it. And what we ventured to do was to maintain that previous burden on the general fund. So that 70% that the general fund was contributing to the... So that seventy percent that the general fund was contributing to the department had a certain dollar figure to it. Our intent was to maintain that dollar figure, increase the fees such that additional workload and additional costs going to the general fund would be covered by those fees. We looked at a number of indicators, and what we found is that the workload going from two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen seventeen to through February of this year, rezones were up twenty-seven, and then subdivision plat reviews completed are up about twenty-one percent. So we've seen this increase from last year to this year. And basically, what the strategy in trying to set these fees was, one, to consolidate the fees. Rezones previously, as you all are well aware, it was based on what you were rezoning to as well as the acreage that, you know, the amount of acreage that was being rezoned. What we did in the proposed changes is to consolidate that to just one fee. The amount of work that staff sees, whether it's five acres or thirty acres, is the same. So we looked to consolidate those, and basically, we kept it at what the high range was. So if you were on the high range of that, you're seeing no increase. But that was, that was basically the strategy, is trying to consolidate our fees as much as possible and make a reasonable increase that would cover the additional burden on the general fund that this increase in workload is, that we're seeing. What we're looking at is probably an estimate of about a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in revenues through this fee change. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. We have one speaker, Mr. Robinson. Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
I'm Stephen Robinson, General Delivery, Golden Valley, Arizona. Chairman Azami, commission, I'm happy to see this item back on the agenda. I was very glad to see the significant reduction in the previously approved proposals that was subsequently repealed, and I thank Supervisor Angus for her work on that issue. However, there are two fees that I think we should take a close look at that should remain unchanged from the existing. One of those is the trailer permit, which is proposal will go up to a hundred dollars, which seems like not a big change. The other one is the home occupation permit, which is also supposed to go up to about a hundred dollars. And here's why I really encourage you to take a look at changing those, keeping those unchanged. Originally, they compared the county's rates to Coconino, Yavapai, and other counties. Well, Coconino's median household income is a hundred and eighty-one percent of Mojave counties. Yavapai County's median household income is a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-five percent of Mojave counties. When you take the three cities out of the equation and look at just what is applicable to the unincorporated areas, instead of the thirty-eight thousand that is the current estimate median household income for the whole county, it drops down to twenty-nine or thirty thousand. Trust me, I've done the math. And that means the most people that are most affected by these fees are the poorest in our communities. And if you want compliance, I really encourage you to leave the rate unchanged at the fifty dollars and encourage more people to comply with the law. On the home occupation permit, the same thing. I can tell you about ten, fifteen different businesses throughout the county. Yes, a lot of them in Golden Valley that do not pay that home occupation permit fee. And the biggest reason is the outrageous restrictions, not the fee itself. So, but still, the fee is an issue because of people trying to start a home-based business. And if you say, oh, it's gonna be a hundred dollars, they're not going to apply. I've looked at other cities and other areas of the country. I have friends up in the Portland area, the city of Troutdale, the city of seventeen thousand, totally urbanized. Fifty-five dollar fee for a home occupation permit. So based upon those reasons, one, we have a very low income level of people that are applying and trying to make their lives better, and they can barely survive. I would strongly encourage you to keep those two fees unchanged. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Any question from the Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff or Director Walsh. I understand that the fees that you're going to impose is based on the cost that you're going to have. So what is the, I mean, to just answer this isolated kind of a situation on the home occupation, what is the process that you basically go through to, you know, to get that, you know?
Chairman Azami, thank you. And I actually may have some good news for Mr. Robinson. Both the temporary and, temporary RV and home occupation for existing permit holders, it will remain the same. As you'll see in the, in the proposed fees, there's a hundred dollar fee for a new application, but after that, the renewals are only fifty dollars. So if we have anybody in the county that currently has an RV permit or a home occupation permit, their fees will remain the same.
So it starts with a hundred dollar, but the renewal is gonna be fifty?
That's correct. And to go back to answer your question as far as the cost, when staff went through and looked at the cost to provide each of these services, the cost that we found was related, was basically what was proposed initially, that initial three hundred and fifty dollar for that application. And going back and looking at it, we brought that back down to, for the initial review, one hundred dollars. And what that review includes for a temporary RV, it comes in, we look at, and I'll probably have to lean on staff to help me out a little bit on what exactly we all look at. But there are a number of things where we have to work with other divisions. We're working with flood control to see, you know, is there a flood plain here? Is it, is this, can we even place an RV?
What is the process if, let's say that, you know, Mr. Robinson shows up and turns in an application, where does it go?
And I'll, if I can lean on Chris for that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for a temporary RV permit, when they come and submit their application, the department simultaneously sends it out to a number of other departments. It will go to environmental quality, verify the fact that there is a functional wastewater system, either existing or at least applied for. There's also making sure that it complies with the zoning. Not every zone we have allows for those temporary RVs. Flood control needs to look at it. The temporary RVs, there are limitations for placing them in flood plains and also limitations on the length that they can stay if they're affected by flooding. Depending on whether or not there are any outbuildings, anything like that, it might even end up in the building division. So it's, it's sent to several other departments. Now, the reviews are concurrent. Once there has been one issued for a property and the applicant is going to place the RV in essentially the same position, or some of the RVs don't move. They actually are placed there and they stay there. But if the RV is going to be, if it's removed and then replaced, but is placed back in the same location, then that review process is much quicker. Really, the only thing we need to verify is whether or not there's been any update on the floodplain maps.
Okay, so my understanding from the earlier conversation that Director Walsh had, to go through environmental health, planning and zoning, flood control, building department if needed, it was calculated to be about three hundred and fifty dollar. However, your recommendation is to pay, you know, for the applicant, application to be paid like a hundred dollar, and from that point on, fifty dollar, although the process stays the same anytime the application comes in. So in a way, the general fund is absorbing the deficit from that extra, you know, deficit that you have from that three fifty.
Chairman Azami, that is correct. And basically, that was part of the strategy that we presented to the Board of Supervisors, was the general fund is absorbing about seventy percent of these applications' costs. What we're looking to do is keep that dollar figure the same and not increase the burden on the general fund. So your observation is correct, that it costs us roughly three hundred and fifty to process that application. However, we recognize that historically and, that the general fund has covered those, the additional costs of those. And based on the, presenting the strategy to the Board of Supervisors, this was a strategy that they felt would be acceptable moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a follow-up on that?
Sure.
I'm unclear what the board's direction was. Was there It sounds to me like what you're saying is they didn't give you a specific percentage of cost recovery, but said, don't exceed what we're already doing, and then maybe look at reasonableness as far as, we're not, as far as you may not be increasing or covering a hundred percent of costs, but maybe there's a path to get to that point at some time, or, I mean, a reasonableness test? What was the specific criteria? And I just wanna know that it was followed and that that policy's decision is what is being included in this proposal.
Definitely. Chairman Azami, Commissioner Bill, Brule, sorry. That's absolutely, actually, the process that we did in presenting this strategy to the board was that the booklet that you have in front of you was presented to the Board of Supervisors and said, this is a strategy that we propose that currently, or previously, the general fund burden covered seventy percent of these applications' cost. That seventy percent matched out to, and I don't have the, I can get you the dollar figure, but it came up to a certain dollar figure. Moving forward, as those permit applications increase, that cost is gonna increase. That seventy percent represents a bigger number. The strategy is, let's keep that dollar figure the same, so bringing that back down. So say that seventy percent, you know, initially, that seventy percent was a hundred thousand dollars. As we get more applications, that hundred thousand dollars is gonna increase because we've received more in. So that difference that we're looking to cover with this minor fee increase is basically that difference.
I completely understood that, actually. Thank you very much. So the contribution to, from the general fund to subsidize these applications, the goal is for that dollar amount, that absolute dollar amount to remain constant over time, and then for the fees to be increased based on that formula. Keep maintaining that level of contribution from the general fund, and then moving forward from that. And testing for reasonableness also and applicability. Okay, great.
Thank you. Because the way I look at it, fifty dollar doesn't buy much, you know, employment, especially in like, you know, government.
Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Walsh.
Commissioner Abbott?
In your, in the writing here I'm looking for, it says currently, the fees recovering is approximately thirty-five, thirty to thirty-five percent the cost of processing. I think you guys have done a lot of work on getting this where you've got it. What is that figure going to be now? What is, what is the recovery going to be roughly? What percentage? Do you know that? I'm sure you do. I'll talk to you at your meetings.
I'm sure I do, too. Basically, what we're looking at, and I don't know that I have the specific percentage, but basically, what we've done is, is in, it's roughly, what we're looking at is an increase of about twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand to the revenue. That twenty-five to twenty-seven is basically roughly a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in our revenues. So I could get my calculator out and figure out what that, where that seventy to thirty goes to, but I don't have, I apologize, I don't have it right here. But basically, what that is, is currently our revenues, and I've got it right here, let's see.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but the big picture on this is that over time, that gap will close with this, with this approach. Basically, the subsidy will get smaller and smaller and smaller year after year every time you make an adjustment based on, if you're consistent with your philosophy that you've, and your approach.
And the percentage will get smaller and smaller based on, based, and a lot, there's a lot of factors in with that. Based on the volume that we see in, those percentages will change. Basically, what we've done with this specific, this specific proposal is to maintain that dollar figure that the general fund has covered. So just for a, for comparison, for two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we received about a hundred thousand in revenues. With these proposed changes, we're looking probably, those specific numbers, two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we received a hundred thousand. If these fees would have been in place, it would have increased it to a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So it would have been an increase of twenty-five thousand for those numbers last year. What we're looking at this year with current, with the current fees, we're anticipating roughly about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in revenues, and then a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in revenues. But with the proposed fee change, we'd be looking at roughly a hundred and fifty-six thousand. So we're looking at about an increase, I guess, I'd I'd get lost in this, a decrease to the general fund burden of about twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And excuse me, I just, in my head, it's about nine percent, a little, it's about nine percent less subsidy, basically.
Perfect.
Correct.
Appreciate the help on that.
Okay, question?
Question. Two questions, actually. You were saying for a flood map, it cost you a hundred dollars?
No, for, we were talking, the temporary RV permits, is that
No, in your, the first part, you said that for the paperwork you guys, that require that a flood map was at a hundred dollars. That's awful high for a flood map.
No.
No. For the, for an RV permit, part of the RV permit processing, so a temporary RV, if somebody wants to place a temporary RV permit on their property, part of processing that permit is to send it over to flood control to review their maps to make sure that they're not placing that RV within a floodplain.
Oh, okay.
There is no mapping. What the statement was that, you know, several different departments, they have to approve, environmental health, planning and zoning, flood control, and building if needed, so.
And also, too, you said the work involved. What do you mean by the work involved? Is just that consolidating paperwork, or you actually go out and look at the sites, or?
I think it'll vary, application by application, but yeah, it's basically all of the work included. Basically, consolidating that paperwork, possibly going out to the site, looking at the site, making sure it's compatible.
All right, thank you.
All-inclusive.
All right. Okay. You also, I know in your report you also elaborate on, I guess the answer was, Mr. Robinson, I believe that, you know, that was addressed, that, you know, there's gonna be a deficit, and it seems like it is fair. You know, the way I see it is like, you know, three hundred and fifty dollar. So they, I guess the factor was to make sure that, you know, what Mr. Robinson was concerned about is addressed. So, okay. Now, on the rest of the agenda, you had also some comments about, you know, overall, you know, the increases that you have. I know that you are factoring in the growth that we have, and, you know, I don't wanna call it a boom, but a mini, you know, increase in, you know, the applications, economy in general and all that. And I'm sure you heard me a million times saying the same thing about like, you know, streamlining, customer service fees associated with, you know, the growth. So, and I know that, you know, you're doing your best to basically, you know, provide that kind of thing. Is there anything you can add on? Because I know a factor of this is also the building department, and if you could elaborate on that.
Definitely. Thank you, Chairman Azami. Thank you, Chairman Azami. Yes, we, we've been, we've been going through and, and looking at ways in which we can improve our processes. We, we, we've, in, in coming up with this strategy, we, we've looked at a couple of different things, you know, for, since the, since the crash, or since the, everything's kind of, call it what you will, it's been pretty flat. So in, in looking at it, looking at trend lines, you've got a flat line, and then all of a sudden, we're, we're shooting up pretty quick. So the, the intent with this is, with respect to fees, and then I'll, I'll speak to the customer service, the intent was, right now, we're seeing this bump. So right now, this is our, our first step in trying to address that and, and trying to accommodate that and lessen the burden on the general fund. Should that trend continue, in order to be able to provide good customer service and be able to meet the needs of, of the applicants, we'll, we'll need to continue to monitor this and, and possibly bring it back to you sometime in the future to, to look at, at additional increases in order to be able to, to bring in additional staff to address those, those, that, that increase in, in, in work. Chris and her staff have done a wonderful job on, on looking at, at our processes and trying to find ways in, in, in order to, to streamline those and make it more user-friendly, more applicant-friendly. And, and we'll continue to, to go down that route as well, and as, as well on the building department. We're, we're looking at processes in, in between the, the divisions on how we can complement each other, remove any duplication of effort that we have, and, and really try and, and get things back out as, as quickly as we can, because we do understand that, you know, time is money, and, and when these applicants are, are moving forward, any, any additional time that we can save them helps them on, on their ventures, so.
Yes. Again, I had the opportunity to be a part of the land use ordinance, and I know the philosophy in two or three of them that I was involved was to streamline the process, make it less bureaucratic and, you know, more customer-friendly, make sure that, you know, the turnaround would be, you know, respected. And again, at the same time, a lot of items that were, the word common sense that was brought up earlier to be applied. So that would also translate into less overhead, which basically, you know, would help with, you know, your budget. I know that, you know, by state of Arizona, the law that we have is the building permits are, that's in a state, are basically collected to provide service. And, you know, that is going to give you that opportunity to make sure that, you know, the process would be fast, consistent, and the factor would be, you know, the customer service, which, you know, we discussed that, and I'm sure this afternoon, we'll elaborate on it even more. So, you know, having said that, you know, I believe that, you know, I have 100% trust in your direction in getting to that point. And I hope, I recommend, as a, you know, as a person that has been involved in this thing, to please, you know, I understand in the, the material that we had, discussed about, you know, the overhead, the plan checker and things like that, but there was nothing mentioned about, you know, the streamlining and/or, you know, flavor of customer service, turnaround consistency. So I just, again, you know, I, I know that, you know, I've, I've said that many, many times. So I just hope that, you know, you would not lose the sight of that part of it in the evaluation. But, you know, you did a great job, your staff done a great job on this thing, and, you know, it's something that, you know, I was, I'm sure that you would be very proud, and we are proud of that. So I open up to the Commission for any further discussion. This is an action item, right?
Yes.
So if that is the case, if you don't have any further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I want to thank staff. I think we've come a long way from a couple of months ago when we first looked at it and moved it to Board of Supervisors. I like the consolidation of the fees, the simplification of it. And I think the fees proposed are, they seem very fair to me on both sides. So I like where we ended up personally, and, and I would make a motion to approve this item based on what was presented today and staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gordon and a second by Commissioner Beller. Any further discussion? If not, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, you did a great job.
Thank you.
What is, I don't have a agenda. My, my computer is at 186 right now, so.
Call to the public.
Okay. Call to the public. Mr. Robinson? I have a computer, let's do it. I guess I'll fix it.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. Chairman Azami and members of the Commission, thank you for a chance to speak. First thought, I would encourage, just like you moved number four up to the first section, consider moving call to the public up to the first part of the section. That way, people that don't have a personal interest in any of the other items can express their concerns to you and then go on. I want to talk about two issues regarding planning, zoning, and building inspection, accountability and transparency. In a word, customer-friendly. I was in another city in the county and stopped by planning and zoning and asked them for a list of all the applicants, the process, you know, where they're at in their step, whether it was rezones, general plan, or area plan amendments, or even building permits. I was told it would require that I get a public records request for each and every application. I was a little surprised because I can go to other cities, Bullhead and others, and they have the lists that they publish weekly. And I think it would really be good for the people to know who's applied, what's the process, or where they're at in the process, because sometimes the feeling, and we've heard it expressed, that it takes forever to get something through. If you had this list that was published weekly, and I was told our county system doesn't afford that opportunity, but it would really help the public to know that every, and it would make it more accountable, more transparent, and hence, customer-friendly. Now, if it is the cost, fortunately, the county for the last 11 years has been collecting an automation fund at $40 per, of application. That fund is built up to over $500,000 as we speak. If we need to take a look at what it would take to produce and generate that report automatically on a weekly basis, it would give the public a chance to see where the process is and how it's worked in the past. So I would really encourage the board to say, hey, let's take a look at this opportunity. There's the money there, we have a growing economy, and thank God, because I remember back, looking back at the records back in 2006 and '07, it was $300,000 to $400,000 just in the planning and zoning. In fact, in 2007, building inspection had $1 million in cost, $1.5 million in revenue. So we're going to see more revenues in a combined, and I do like the 70-30 split because that's what I've been seeing. So if you would look at that option and just say, hey, let's produce something that makes the people appreciative and understand and see what the process is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other call to the public? If not, I close that call to the public. I open it up to the Commissions for any comment. I think, you know, the suggestion that was brought up in terms of call to the public first is a valid point. I, you know, it's, it's not an action item, but, you know, something to, we can consider. This doesn't need to be action item, right? It can be just administrative, right?
That would be at the Chairman's, Chairman's direction. We can, we can move that up.
Well, you know, I'm just saying that it makes sense, you know, for someone to sit and wait until the end to make a comment, he can, you know, make the comment upfront and go home, or go to work. Any objections to that? I guess we don't have.
Yeah, I have no objection.
I guess the Commission is concord with that, so we're going to implement that. And thank you for the comment or suggestion that you had.
Mr. Chairman, the other comment of the gentleman in the call to public, can I just ask, staff, do you produce something that shows the activity and provide it publicly?
Websites.
Chairman Azami, Commissioner Brule, we do, actually. With the building department, we, we publish, is it weekly or monthly, the, the building permits that were issued?
I think it's weekly.
So weekly on our website is published, the, the building permits.
So that information is available to the public?
It is.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? No more comments? Okay, I'll make a motion for the, I mean, entertain a motion for the meeting adjourned.
Make a motion.
Go home.
Sure.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.